April 27, 2023 council meeting. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk present here in council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. We ask that you please silence all electronic devices. And with that, I call this council meeting to order. Could we please stand for our invocation, which will be given by Pastor Randy Law from the National Day of Prayer of Osceola County? Please remain standing after the prayer for our pledge of allegiance.
Dear heavenly Father Lord, we thank you so much that we are in a free nation where we can gather like this, oh Lord, Father, to give our opinions, to be involved, Lord, in our government. I ask, Father, that as this meeting starts, let your peace be here, Lord. Let there be order, Lord, that things be said the proper way. I ask that you give wisdom that comes from you to all the leaders. Father, that the choices that be made be choices that are good for future generations, Lord. Father, only you know the future, so I ask, Father, that you just anoint them, guide them, direct them, oh Lord. May this be a city that honors you, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May I be seated? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Here.
Councilmember Matheny.
Here.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Here.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Here.
I'll ask our city managers if we have any updates to the agenda.
We do not this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are these board members of the National Day of Prayer? You're welcome to come. Whereas America was founded on the principles of religious faith and freedom, and throughout the history of our state and nation, we have humbly prayed for guidance and comfort where needed, and have given thanks for the many blessings which God has graciously bestowed upon this nation since its inception. And whereas prayer is regarded by millions as the most important utterance for mankind for its benefit, and the National Day of Prayer is a day set aside by Congress for all Americans to pray and reaffirm the spiritual principles upon which this nation was founded. And whereas this year is the 72nd anniversary of the observance of the National Day of Prayer, and the theme is "Pray fervently in righteousness and avail much," based on James Chapter 5, verse 16, "The effectual fervent prayer of a righteous man avails much." And whereas across our nation and the world, on May the 4th, 2023, Americans will unite at specific times in prayer to acknowledge our dependence upon God, to ask for forgiveness, mercy, grace, peace, and wisdom, as we are faced with unprecedented challenges, and give thanks for the many blessings our country has received from God, and to recognize our need for personal and corporate renewal and moral values, and to invoke God's wisdom and blessing upon our leaders, and ask God to heal and unite our city, state, and nation during these difficult times. Now therefore, I, Nathan Blackwell, Mayor of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May the 4th, 2023, as National Day of Prayer, and I invite all citizens to pray with diligence, humility, and obedience, and to seek the face of Almighty God to direct our paths in the days and years ahead, and witness whereof I have set my hand and caused this seal to be affixed. Ms. Law, would you like to say something?
I would like to invite everyone who can to come down. They're going to be from 12 to 1:00 at the Boat Basin Pavilion because of all the construction going on over here. So if you can join, even if it's for five minutes, the prayer points are going to be government, church, military, family, education, media, and business. If you have a heart for any of those, come out, join us, and pray. It's very casual. It's not, you don't have to come dressed up. You can come in shorts, just, it's a time to gather together.
And you had something you wanted to share with us?
Yes.
The prayer points are being covered by the churches in your area. So we have pastors that are coming that are going to be there, and your church may be one of those if you attend. And I think, for me, we have a new congregation opening up on Norcoose Road. Nona Church is opening, and so two of the pastors will be part of it. They're all excited because they get to meet also each other, and this is an opportunity for you to also get to know pastors that are praying, and it may call you to be one that God would use. And one that was very important to me, and I want to release this word to you, it was from George Washington, which I respect and honor, and I know you do too. It is impossible to rightly govern the world without God and the Bible. And I would beseech you to say it's hard to raise a family with those, without those as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Get a picture.
Yep.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do. Thank you so much. Any person who desires to comment on any item not on this agenda is provided the opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a signing form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to, or as soon as is practical thereafter, the person addresses the council. We ask that when you come forward that you please state your name and address for the record, and we will ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Tony Jones has requested to speak.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and city manager. I'm here this evening to say-
Could you please state your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. 1619 Florida Avenue, St. Cloud, 34769. I'm here this evening to say thank you to the City of St. Cloud for assisting us with a very serious problem that we had. As you will remember, on September 17, 2017, Hurricane Irma came to town. She damaged all of the documents in the Heritage Museum. By the way, before I go any farther, I want to introduce Mercedes Hoffman. She is our Heritage Museum manager and has worked on this since the beginning, as have I. And we under, for six and a half years, we have been processing the documents and working to get them digitized. We have recently completed that. It's over 100 gigabytes of data. The city graciously offered to host a backup of our entire database, and I can't thank your IT Director Roberto Smith enough. If I could nominate him for employee of the month, I would. He gave up a day, a half of a day off to come over and assist us with getting the documents over here. We will have more to do. There will be additions to go on, but mainly this was just a time where I wanted to come and thank the city for helping us out, because if something were to wipe out our computer, which is the only place we have these documents, we would be back at square one. And some of these newspapers are so old, we can't touch them again. Some of these documents are just that fragile. So thank you, City of St. Cloud, for helping us and for hosting our document database. And we don't know where this will go in the future, but we'll be here to work with the city however we can. And if you have any questions, I would be so happy to answer them.
Councilmember Urban.
I just would like to first and foremost thank the city manager and staff, Roberto, for doing that. I think that's awesome. And I also want to thank everybody at the Women's Club and Heritage Museum. It's a wonderful place, and I went on your historic home tour earlier this year. It was, it was very interesting. I loved it. So thank you.
Okay, over 70 people have worked on this project and thousands of hours.
Yes, thank you to everybody who have worked on this project.
Please convey to all of the staff and all the volunteers our deepest appreciation for all of the hard work they've done preserving our history.
You talk about having a thankful heart. We are very thankful to the City of St. Cloud, and we appreciate you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Thank you.
Jacqueline Odom?
Thank you all for hearing me. My name is Jacqueline Stevens Odom. I live at 617 Vivid Street in St. Cloud, which is basically considered the Hopkins Park community. First of all, I want to give credit where credit is due. I'd like to thank you all for, you started a new sewer, I'm sorry, drainage project in my community. It's almost completed. It's awesome. We're glad to have it. And I want to go back to, I don't have a true count for the number of times that I've been before this council, but since 2013, I have been requesting sewer, I mean, I'm sorry, drainage for our community. I have negative impact on my property. When the City of St. Cloud placed the raised garden, raised bed garden beyond my house, it caused flooding and damage to my home. The reason I'm here is because I had to repair my home. I want to say I retired well, but it cost me my good retirement to repair my home for a damage that I should not have had to repair for, because they put the raised bed garden there, shifted the water down, and then I got flood. I brought pictures to council meetings prior to this. I've been coming here off and on since 2013, just to remind the city that they damaged my home. And I ended up having to spend my retirement money repairing a property that I never should have had to spend my money that way. So I'm, I'm living on a tight budget, and I prepared well. I retired well, but I wasn't going to be homeless, so my option was repair your home or have no place to stay. So that's the statement that I want to make, because had that water not been sent to my property, I got denied because they're telling me that I didn't have gutters. Well, the water didn't come from God. It came from the ground. And that's where my flooding came from. So I just keep, I'm going to keep coming until the day I die, because I spent a lot of money that I shouldn't have had to spend.
Are you through?
Yes, sir.
I believe this has been addressed by the city, has it not, on multiple occasions? Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Would anyone else like to speak during the Citizens Forum? If not, we move on to the next item, which is our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and uncontroversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now's the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. First of all, we'll recognize any items that the council would like to address. Councilmember Matheny.
Um, yes, could I pull item K?
Item K, as in kitchen?
Yes. I didn't know what the K was. I was going to say Kit Kat.
Where's Wendy when you need her? Where's Wendy when you need her? Councilmember Fletcher.
Um, I'd like to pull item C, the Hopkins Park master plan.
And our city manager.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, item I, we did not put the total reimbursement amount on the agenda, and it is an estimated $491,500 in state and federal fund reimbursement for Hurricane Ian.
Thank you. Councilmember Matheny, you spoke first, so we'll-
Okay.
-pull item K, please.
Great. Um, so when I had my agenda review and looked at this property, the, it's the 16 multi-preliminary subdivision plan, creating seven commercial lots, I was like, awesome. It's commercial. It was great to, I was happy to see it. So my concern was, and I don't know if staff could put the picture up while I was talking?
Melissa, can you, or Kelly?
Or somebody put the, put the graphic. But my concern was the two northern lots, six and seven, and the proximity to the existing single-family residential homes. You know, we're going, if we put a multi-story commercial building in, you know, those people have been living there for a long time, and then, you know, I have a multi-story building behind my house, and I always think, are they looking in my backyard, you know, when you're out in the pool and stuff? So I did speak with the applicant about this, and we came up with, I think, a great solution for this. If you can go to the site plan.
I don't believe we included a site plan.
It's not in there? Yeah. So we talked about lot number seven, which that's the one that doesn't have the road. So lot number six has the road going across the northern edge, and lot number seven doesn't. And so we talked about if they do a multi-story building, would they be willing to not have any windows from the second story up on the north side that overlooks into the homes? And they were willing to do that. And also, we discussed if they leave the building on the north part of the parcel and put the parking to the south of it, any noise associated with the parking would be buffered by the building. So again, protecting the residents to the north. And they were willing to make those concessions. I also brought up the fact, when I looked at the right-of-way for Canoe Creek Road, there's a jog in the right-of-way. If you look at the right-of-way and run it up into Davis Estates, it's to the north, there's about a six-foot piece of right-of-way that would make a consistent section, and they're willing to dedicate that to the county, or to the city as well. Or maybe it's the county, because it's a county road, I don't know. But they're willing to dedicate that piece of right-of-way, and I know that they have representatives here that probably want to come up and confirm that. But I thought those were great concessions to work with us. I did speak with the city manager and Mr. Manzares to see if I'm allowed to put that condition on, and we are allowed to add that condition. But I just thought it was a great way to try to buffer the homes, and if it is a multi-story building, not have windows on the north side on lot seven. That all makes sense.
Is the applicant here would like to speak to this item?
Good evening. John Moody with Osceola Engineering Incorporated, 1003 Florida Avenue. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Are you willing to agree to those items, conditions that she just?
On behalf of the applicant, yes.
All right. Do we need to take any further action, Mr. Manzares?
I would just like to clarify that. Excuse me. So the window piece will not, will be inconsistent with the architectural standards for, so as long as the council recognizes that.
Just on the north side.
Just on the north.
So they can have windows on the south, east, west. It's just the north side that looks over into the homes.
And just that one lot?
And just that lot.
Right. I just want to make it clear that that's, the council understood that part of it, and that's fine, so.
All right.
So essentially, there's three conditions then, right?
So it'd be the right-of-way dedication to make it a consistent section with what's just to the north of it, in Davis Estates, and then if they have a multi-story building, no windows on the north-facing side of lot seven.
Okay.
And I'd love the parking to be on the south side of the building.
All right.
I'll throw that in there.
I think it has to be-
Third comment.
Yeah. I think that's going to happen.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, we're good.
We're good. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else?
No, that's it. Do we need to vote on it separately?
Well, so my, it probably would be easier just to take that one separate with a motion to approve it with the additional three conditions you just mentioned.
Well, if we're going to do that, would anyone else in the audience like to speak to item K? Do I have a motion that we approve item K with the conditions that we've just gone over, the windows, the right-of-way, the parking?
Still moved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Councilmember Fletcher, item C.
Um, I just wanted to make a couple of comments related to this, positive comments. Basically, thanking city staff, our consultant. They've done a great job with the community engagement, and we've received a lot of positive feedback from the community. Um, I've had the opportunity to spend time with the Community Garden Club out there. I visited the spring break, folks, the homeschool programs, and the different sports groups that use the park, and everyone is extremely excited. And basically, it warms my heart every time I visit the park, and I look forward to seeing this master plan onto the next stages of this process. And Mayor, I think there's some folks here in the front that may want to speak.
I'll get to that in just a minute. Councilmember Matheny.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I agree with him wholeheartedly. It was a great master plan. I gave kudos to staff when I saw it. The only one comment I made was there wasn't enough shade or seating for the parents at the ball fields, and could they address that in the, you know? Finally, it was just one little bleacher. I was like, I, yeah, it's, anyways, they, they said they'd address that as we got further in.
All right.
Can we have the kids take a picture?
Mr. Odom, Augusto Odom, you've requested to speak to this item.
I'm Pastor Augusto Odom, 1621 Orange Avenue, St. Cloud, 34769, and I am the president of the Hopkins Park Community Watch. And I'm here on behalf of Hopkins Park community to thank everyone for your labor and for everything that's on the agenda for a new community center. And we appreciate everything you're doing, and we're looking forward to you approving this situation tonight, that we can hopefully soon have a community center. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Could you come right here and stand facing the congregation? And could all of you, could the fan club, the Hopkins Park Fan Club, please come up and gather around Mr. Odom, let's get a picture here, Mr. Odom and-
Bring your signs.
Bring your signs. All right.
Oh, look at the signs. Poster.
And just want to thank you all very much, and our councilman, Mr. Fletcher, he's been out there with us, you know, keeping us in line.
Thank you, Pastor Odom. Would anyone else like to speak to any other item on the consent agenda? If not, could I have a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda minus the item K that's already been approved?
Still moved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny. Have a second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
The next portion of tonight's meeting are public hearings. Madam Clerk, could you please read items one and two?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2023-11, an ordinance of the city council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of mixed use to approximately 29.48 acres identified as Amavi St. Cloud, Clay Whaley, located south of Clay Whaley, west of Florida's Turnpike, and east of Stagecoach Road, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the planning commission, recommendation of proof of publication, applicability and effect, severability, copies on file, and effective date. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2023-12, an ordinance of the city council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately 29.48 acres identified as Amavi St. Cloud, Clay Whaley, from mixed-use zoning designation county to a mixed-use zoning designation city with a mixed-use future land use designation adopted by ordinance number 2023-11, generally located south of Clay Whaley, west of Florida's Turnpike, and east of Stagecoach Road, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map, filing of the planning commission, recommendation and proof of publication, severability, and effective date.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council Mayor Dagmarin Sagara, Planning Manager. So this is the second reading of the Amavi official land use designation and zoning that we discussed on our previous meeting on April 13. As stated, it's located south of Clay Whaley, west of the forest Turnpike. The applicant is requesting a proposed future land use of mixed use and is zoning as well the mixed use. This is part of the Lake Toho concept plan. The location of the property is indicated in the concept plan demonstrated on the slide. The project, as we stated previously, is, consists of a neighborhood to, allows for 80% residential and allows up to 25 dwelling units per acre. It will provide to access to Clay Whaley and future connections. We adopted concept plans from the county and preliminary subdivisions from the county. It meets the strategic goal of growth management and is the request of staff to recommend approval of ordinance 2023-11 and ordinance 2023-12. The applicant is here to answer any questions, and I'm also here to answer any questions.
Thank you. With the applicant? Would you like to be recognized at this time?
Cameron Hindle, 8 Broadway, Kissimmee, Florida, 34741, here to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to items one or two? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. Could I entertain a motion for item number one? Councilmember Urban, I'm sorry, I didn't see your light.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a clarifying question either for the applicant or staff. This particular project was already in development with the county, correct?
So prior to the H-Water annexation, yeah, they went through the concept plan process through the county and preliminary subdivision process through the county. And at the time that we annexed all of the H-Water area, we included those concept plans into the annexation agreement.
Okay, so this likely would have been developed if the city didn't annex it in?
Yeah, yeah. And the plans that they are proposing are still, they are not, they're still the same from what their approvals in the county.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that, and I'll make a- Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that, and I'll make a motion for approval.
We have a motion from Councilmember Urban. Do I have a second? Second. And we have a second from Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
Do you have a motion or a discussion regarding Item Number Two, Ordinance Number 2023-12? Mr. Urban, you're on the roll, ma'am. Let's go.
Motion for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. Second from the mayor, thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
Brings us to Item Number Three. Madam Clerk, would you please read that into the record?
Final public hearing for Ordinance Number 2023-19, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending and restating all sections of the city's personnel rules and regulations, referred hereafter as Employee Handbook, providing for severability, conflict, and effective date.
Good evening, Justin Kleisner, Human Resources Director. We're excited to bring forward changes to our personnel rules, uh, hereafter referred to as the Employee Handbook. The document hasn't been revised in over 13 years, so it's needed a much, uh, nice facelift there, so to speak. In bringing forward this proposal, we'd completed the negotiation process with each of our unions who have adopted the changes. Some of the proposed, uh, updates to the handbook include providing a way to compensate and incentivize general status employees who, who achieve a professional certification, providing up to 24 hours of paid leave for, uh, general status employees to volunteer and positively impact our community, modifying our acting status process, streamlining our recruitment process, as well as incorporating previously approved policies and other legal requirements. In summary, the proposed changes before you provide meaningful updates to our policies for our employees' benefit. But our work is not done. As we continue to evolve and grow as an organization, we're gonna bring forward smaller targeted changes to the handbook. And we're excited about this long overdue update to our policies. We recommend approval of this ordinance. I'm available for any questions you have.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. Councilmember Gilbert?
Uh, yeah. There was a minor change since the first hearing, correct?
Yes, there were two small changes that were put into effect, um, since we last spoke. The first one was just an oversight and error that the city attorney caught. We added back in language about appeal rights for department directors and seasonal staff. The other one was to allow employees who are on, or that are on workers' comp essentially when they're returned in light duty status, to allow them to, um, be paid their regular rate when they're going to those appointments.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do we have any further discussion or questions?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for Councilmember Matheny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
Brings us to Items Four and Five. Madam Clerk?
First reading and introduction of Ordinance Number 2023-20, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation, MDR, medium density, dead city residential to approximately 25.69 acres, identified as Heritage Crossing, located north of Fourth Street, west of Columbia Avenue, south of Cross Creek Court, and east of Brown Chapel Road, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the planning commission recommendation and proof of publication, applicability and effective, and effect, severability, copied on file, and effective date. First reading and introduction of Ordinance Number 2023-21, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of PUD planned unit development compatible with a medium-density residential future land use designation change adopted by Ordinance Number 2023-20 for approximately 25.69 acres identified as Heritage Crossing, located north of Fourth Street, west of Columbia Avenue, south of Cross Creek Court, and east of Brown Chapel Road, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map, providing for an approval of the PUD zoning preliminary master plan, filing of the planning commission recommendation, and proof of publication, severability, and effective date.
Good evening, Melissa Dunklin, Community Development Director. I'm gonna go ahead and, um, present both items since they were read together on the record, and the applicant has a presentation following my presentations. So what you see tonight before you is the request for a comp plan amendment for Heritage Crossings. The current future land use is public institutional. The proposed future land use is medium-density residential. The proposed development is compatible with the surrounding area and will cause no adverse impacts on city facilities. The net residential acreage is 25.14, and the existing future land use, although it does not, um, specifically allow for residential development, it does allow for limited, um, housing for principal uses such as a pastor or priest for a church living on site, or the groundskeepers for parks. Um, the proposed future land use of medium-density residential allows up to 10 dwelling units per acre, which would, in this case, allow up to 251 dwelling units per acre. Um, however, the applicant is proposing 198 dwelling units attached, so they'll be townhomes, and that does equate to 7.87 dwelling units per acre. Here you'll see the future land use and zoning map, which shows you the surrounding future land use designations and the zoning classifications. I won't get into that too much because the applicant's presentation will go into more detail. I'm gonna skip that. Um, the request meets the strategic plan goal for growth management. On April four, sorry, on April 18th, Planning Commission did recommend denial based on concerns regarding drainage and traffic. However, when staff reviewed it, we did, uh, support this application, and we do recommend approval. The concurrent zoning map amendment request is for a planned unit development. Uh, the existing future land use, as I said, is public institutional, and they are requesting medium-density residential. Again, we found that this request is compatible with the surrounding area and will cause no adverse impacts to city facilities. Again, you'll see the future land use and zoning map. The project applicant is, is requesting to have approved tonight a single-phase development that will include two-story townhomes that are both front and rear-loaded. They'll have a minimum lot width of 20 feet, and they'll all have a minimum, um, air-conditioned living area of 1,400 and a max of 1,600 square feet. This will include a passive lakefront park with walking trail, and the walking trail al- around the lakefront park will be public. The recreational area will include a pool, cabana, and barbecue grills for the residents' use. Again, the total acreage is 27.66, and the reason why that's different from your gross residential acreage is because they lust out the right-of-ways that they're going to improve. But they're proposing 198 townhomes, and again, that equates to 7.87 dwelling units per acre. Here's a graphic representation of the layout of the proposed planned development. This request meets the strategic plan goals for growth management. Okay, here's the fun part. So staff is recommending approval, uh, with the following conditions, and the applicant has already agreed to comply with these conditions, but I will read them, um, for the record. Uh, the applicant must comply with the following: minimum and maximum percentages of specific facade materials for attached single-family, including townhomes and duplexes. The minimum percentage of stone and/or brick in a primary facade is 20%, and the minimum percentage of stone and/or brick in a secondary facade is 10%. The maximum percentage for stucco in a primary facade is 60%, and the maximum percentage for wood panel, including painted or stained lap horizontal siding, vertical board, battened wood siding, is 60%. The maximum percentage for stucco in a secondary facade is 70%, and the maximum percentage for wood panel, including painted or stained lap horizontal siding, vertical board, battened wood siding, is 70%. Percentage calculation. The percentage calculation shall be based on exterior walls excluding finestration, trims, and decorative elements, permissible facade materials, high-quality facade materials, including but not limited to brick, stone, wood, panel, including painted or stained lap horizontal siding, vertical board, battened wood siding, and stucco. D, prohibited facade materials. Prohibited facade materials include untreated concrete block, plywood, unfinished lumber, aluminum textured T1-11, corrugated fiberglass, sheet metal, or tin siding, and any other materials determined by the city to be of similar nature or effect. And finally, if a rear facade faces an adjacent right-of-way street or other public realm space is visible from but does not front a right-of-way, it requires two articulation elements. Enhanced perimeter landscape is permissible as one of the two required articulation elements. The perimeter landscaped area shall be a minimum of five feet wide and shall include ground cover and shrubs or vegetation that provide dense screening with a mature height of six feet at a minimum, and one under-story tree or clusters of three palm trees for each 25 feet or fraction thereof of linear building facade. So again, Planning Commission did recommend denial on this item. Staff is recommending approval of Ordinance 2023-21 and Ordinance 2023-20. Uh, staff is available for questions, and I believe the applicant is ready to present their case.
Come ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers John Adams of RJ Widdon and Associates, 316 Church Street, Kissimmee, 34741. We are the planners for the project. I do have rather lengthy presentation that was prepared prior to the latest, uh, ordinance from staff, so I'll be able to skip over quite a bit of the specifics because it's in the ordinance that staff has drafted. And when I get to those points, I'll point them out. But we do have a lot of information in our presentation. I also want to let you know that my client is here, my client's legal counsel, our civil engineer is here, our transportation engineer is here, and the school board is here, should any of those, uh, should you have any questions requiring any expertise of those present, uh, disciplines? I need an education. What button do I push? That one? Okay, you got a pointer on here? That's that one? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. I appreciate your indulgence. Uh, John Adams, again, this is Heritage Crossing. This is both a comprehensive plan and a PUD zoning application. I'm gonna go through the presentation on both of those. If at any time you have any questions and you want me to stop and address those questions immediately, I'd be happy to do so, or I'll be available, uh, to, at the end of the presentation to answer questions as well, at your discretion, Mr. Mayor. This is the existing land use. This property is currently owned by the Public School Board of Osceola County. It has been designated with the state as surplus property. They are required by law to dispose of this property. That's the reason for the comprehensive plan amendment. That's the reason that, uh, we are requesting, and I do want to go back and point out, all that bright yellow surrounding us is medium-density residential existing. There is a sliver of lots along our south property line that is low-density residential. The, uh, sliver of lots is right across the south property line. You've got high-density residential in the area, the darker brown. You've got some mixed use. You've got your commercial. But most of this bright yellow is medium-density residential. Uh, the first finding that the staff is required to go through is if the proposed change is contrary to established land use. I think the map shows you we're consistent with the established land use. Uh, the second one is, is in an isolated district. Again, I believe the map demonstrates that we're not requesting an isolated district. The third issue, would it material alter the population density pattern and thereby increase or overtax the load on public facilities? Well, your staff has already made a recommendation, but I want to point out a few things. Uh, the medium-density residential is not anticipated to adversely influence living conditions in the neighborhood, and I'll go through some details on why. Uh, we used originally the 2.7 persons per household, which is based on census, but your staff has now generated a new number based on the July 1st, 2022 census, which is 3.48 persons per household. That translates to 689 person with a new calc, persons with a new calculation. Your city has currently over 67,000 residents. We're at 1%. So we are not creating a significant impact on population. In addition to that, the, uh, medium-density residential would not increase yet, trip generation over the potential that it currently has. We are proposing 198 townhomes. That'll generate 1,458 new trips daily with 197 AM peak hour trips, 115, uh, PM peak hour trips. I want to put the 115 number in perspective. That's the PM peak hour, 115 trips. That's about one trip per minute, so that's not a significant increase, and we do have some proposed transportation improvements that we believe is gonna help relieve some of the, uh, traffic congestion out there. We are proposing a new connection, an extension of Robinson Avenue, and a new connection from Robinson Avenue along the north side of the school board's property that my client is purchasing additional property and putting a connector road into Columbia. I'll, I've got some graphics, and I can demonstrate how that can help relieve some of the traffic, especially at Fifth Street and Robinson. Uh, the district boundaries are not illogically drawn. That's another criteria. Uh, the comprehensive plan, medium-density residential, is consistent with the goals and policies that your staff has identified. The change requiring this amendment is the fact that the school board has declared this with the state as surplus property, and they're required by law to dispose of the property. The, uh, proposed comprehensive plan will not influence, will not adversely influence living conditions in the neighborhood. We believe that it will not, and there's reasons why. The excessive increase in traffic on Number Eight, with that new roadway network that we are creating, we will create an opportunity to split traffic to two locations to relieve that Fifth Street and Robinson Avenue intersection. But more importantly, with the current land use and the current zoning, there's a laundry list of non-residential permanent uses and conditional uses, but there's permanent uses that will generate five times more traffic if the existing zoning stayed in place. And since they're permanent uses, they could be constructed with no action required by this board. And I'll get into more detail with that. Staff has identified that it'll generate over 671,000 square feet of office alone, which generates 7,200 trips compared to our 1,450 trips. Uh, medium-density residential, we're at a 7, uh, point eight, um, excuse me, 7.8 dwelling units per acre. The medium-density is up to 10, so we're not even maximizing the request. The primary transportation facility will be, as I said, from Robinson and Columbia via a new connector road that we'll be constructing. Uh, the change from the existing professional zoning and land use will result in approximately a 5,800 trips per day reduction, or about an 80% reduction of the potential that this pro- property currently has through permitted uses. Now, that's just applying an office use to it. You've got permitted retail uses, you've got restaurants that are permitted uses, they generate even more traffic than office. So we're looking at an 80% reduction in trips with what we're proposing. Drainage problems, that was a big issue at both our community meetings. It was discussed, and obviously at the Planning Commission as well. We do have our civil engineer here that can speak specifically to drainage, but my point is simply this: We're not only required by your code, we are required by the South Florida Water Management District permit conditions that we must accept all historic water that flows onto the property. Now, we're going to be doing that from the southwest corner through taking it through a pipe, underground pipe, and keeping that drainage and bypassing our central pond, but all the other water from onsite, we're going to be routing into our pond and then piping it out through a discharge at the main canal systems, and I've got some exhibits that I'll show you that. This proposed change will not seriously reduce light and air. We are proposing a buffer. We are going to plant trees in that buffer. They're going to put some shade on our neighbors, I suppose, but that will be detailed at the subdivision construction plans and reviewed in detail. Adversely affect property values. Adjacent to us, we have four single-family homes to the south on five lots. We have mobile homes to our west, mobile homes to our north. There's two PUDs at our northeast section, north of our connector road, that have 50-foot lots, but they're single-family. My client has built this product successfully in other jurisdictions around central Florida. The anticipated market rate of this product is going to be over 300,000. So we believe we're going to be compatible with property values. We're limiting to two-story. They're all three-bedroom units. And the next point about the detriment to improvement or development of adjacent property, I'm going to show you a little bit later, where we are actually not just extending Robinson and creating a connector over to Columbia, we are also providing stubout roadways at our northeast corner and our northwest corner, which will encourage any redevelopment or extension of the grid network out to Orange Brown, and then again back out to Columbia in a second location. Special privilege, this is not a special privilege, we're requesting something that's consistent with an overwhelming majority of our, of the area, and reasonable use. Yes, there are other properties that this development could be developed on, but when you take a look at some of the permitted and conditional uses in professional, what we are requesting, we believe, is much more appropriate for the residential character of that neighborhood. Is it out of scale? Well, again, we're not out of scale. We're requesting something that we're consistently around or surrounded by. And other adequate sites, I would discuss that. This is what your map would look like should your comp plan be approved. I tried to match that bright yellow color, but that's what it's going to be, and I didn't quite get the right tone, but obviously you can see we're consistent with an overwhelming majority of the surrounding properties. Now, I talked a little bit about some of the things we were doing on the comp plan. This is our PD amendment, and I do want to go in detail. The Robinson Avenue extension, that road right now is a substandard right-of-way. My client is negotiating with the school board, and they've agreed that they will make this a full urban section along Robinson. My client is acquiring some additional property on the east side of Robinson. Robinson then would be rerouted up to the northeast corner. That's one of those potential stubouts in the future. Yes, there's a canal there now, but canals can be piped and roads can be built on top of them. Additionally, there's another stubout to the northwest, which goes into the mobile home park, but that could be with redevelopment or connect over to Orange Brown as well. The connector road to Columbia Avenue, this will create a perimeter roadway network around all four sides of Lakeview Elementary School. This is what we recognize is a problem down at Fifth Street and Robinson. There is heavy congestion there, especially with school drop-off times, but this creates the opportunity, and my client has been working with the school board, to reroute their onsite parent drop-off. That parent drop-off is subject to school board approval, but the best part about all of that rerouting is regardless of how much extra capacity they create onsite, we will be relieving half of those trips because with this new roadway, people don't have to exit back down to that same Robinson and Fifth Street intersection. We're providing an alternate access to access out on Columbia. I am not standing here telling the public or any of you that we're going to solve all the problems that are out there, but we're doing our part to help relieve those problems. This is a benefit to the neighborhood, and it's a significant reduction in the intersection of Robinson and Fifth Street. This is our project description, I already talked about it. And I do want to talk about the Central Park that we're proposing. It is open to the public. There is a trail, about a half-mile trail. It's all open to the public. The only facilities that are going to be specifically for the residents of the community is our clubhouse and pool, the barbecue area, the playground, the dog park. That's all open to the public, and it's all connected, our sidewalk network and our trail network. City, this is about your policies with surrounding areas. I want to talk a little bit about that. We are proposing, and I'll go in detail on the perimeter of our project, a buffer between our requested medium-density residential and the residential medium-density around us. Your code doesn't require that, but we're proposing it. That's an additional benefit over and above your code requirements. There's the existing zoning, and with some of the uses I'm going to show you in that professional zoning district, they would be much more out of place with the mobile homes to our north and our west, even the residential homes to our south, and the residential homes up on these PUDs. That's a description of the professional district right out of your code. Here are some of the non-residential commercial, or excuse me, conditional and permitted uses, which permitted uses could be built with the current zoning with no action by this board, and some of them are pretty extreme. I could just point out a few offices that we used as an example for the trip generation, restaurants, post offices, hospitals. There's conditional uses of heliports and gun ranges. Yes, schools are allowed. Yes, you know, the government offices, sheriff's department, fire departments are allowed, but most of these permitted uses, non-residential permitted uses, would generate much more traffic than what we are proposing. Here's the eight findings in the staff report. The current public institutional, future land use, and the current zoning designation of professional allows for office, restaurant, and other high-trip generating uses. At a .6 FAR, that translates again to over 670,000 square feet, 7,200 trips just for the office, even more if it's retail and restaurant. We are reducing trips from the potential by 80%. Unified control, we've established the unified control. My client has this currently under purchase contract. Locational standards are met, internal PD standards are met. Not only are we creating buffers, we also have excess open space that your code requires. We have additional open space. We're meeting on-street parking, off-street parking, underground facilities, and the general design and bicycle parking. Property is suitable for a PD, is guided by the city's comprehensive plan, and the modifications that we're proposing are over and above, and they're justified or equivalent to what's around us, if not improved upon those traditional standards, the traditional zoning standards. So we're over and above your traditional zoning standards. The, okay, the increased open spaces also, we're providing it for public purposes again, These are the conditions that have now been incorporated into the ordinance. Let me just say that we've met all these conditions and/or agreed to them in the ordinance, and the county did read, the staff did read into the record, the additional condition that was placed on regarding your architectural design standards, and we are in agreement with accepting that as well. Again, I want to point out this Central Park area, we've got a central recreation area that's all connected to the public sidewalk network. We're extending Robinson Avenue, we're connecting over to Columbia, but I want to go through those perimeter buffers that I talked about. I'm going to start over on the southwest corner. This is one single-family home, and there is a retention area across the street, and I could talk a little bit about what we're doing with that drainage because that's the required offsite, some of the required offsite drainage that we have to accommodate. But all along that area and the west property line, and the north property line, and the east property line down to the connector road, there is currently a six-foot vinyl, white vinyl fence along a portion of our west property line. We are going to maintain that or allow that fence to be, to remain, and we're going to extend that fence around all those property lines that I just talked about. In addition to that, we're providing a 15-foot buffer and three canopy trees, one under-story trees, and 15 shrubs every 100 feet in that area, with one exception, and that would be over on our northeast corner. We will continue that vinyl, six-foot vinyl fence, but I know it's difficult to see, but there is a 30-foot public right-of-way adjacent to us, and it is heavily vegetated. Those trees are going to remain, so we're asking that we just put the fence there and not have to put our planning requirement along that property line because of that existing vegetation. We're doing something a little special on the south property line on Fourth Street. Now, we've met, our client has met with Mr. Woods, who represents his family there. What we're doing with Fourth Street is agreeing to enhance landscaping on the south side of Fourth Street, but that's not all we're doing. We are actually realigning Fourth Street approximately 15 feet to the north. We're providing for a urban section right-of-way, and we are going to provide that additional 15 feet, now that's subject to engineering design, legal descriptions, to the woods. We're going to give them the property once it's vacated. They would be entitled to half of what was vacated anyway, but we're just letting them have the property. In addition to that, my client has agreed to extend their driveways and create additional buffering on their front yards, which the last time, that's not been resolved yet, but the last time I was directed, we were talking about a split rail, metal split rail fence with some shrubs. But there is another agreement my client is willing to make. They're going to, when they bring water and sewer utilities in, they're going to be stubbing out all the way down to their new property line, their utilities for water and sewer. So they're still working with Mr. Woods for a final design, which you will see during your final master plan. When you review that, there'll be a final design in that landscaping, but the ordinance does require enhanced landscaping on the south side of Fourth Street. This is the current Lakeview Elementary. Now, this is some of the discussions we've had about, with the school board, that they will be rerouting or extending whatever parent drop-off they have on their property. It is totally subject to their design, they are in complete control of that design. They just don't have any money to redesign their onsite drop-off until they sell this property. But there are a couple other things that they're doing. This is the current entrance into the school, and Fifth Street is located right down here. What they've conceptually agreed to with us in discussions is when we extend Robinson Avenue to the north, they're going to realign their entrance and their ingress egress point up to Fourth Street, the new Fourth Street. That, just in and of itself, will create some additional lane footage and stacking distance on Robinson Avenue, but it would likely go in and loop all the way around internal. But here's the best part: If traffic is going to access from the south on Robinson, when they exit up the new Fourth Street, they don't have to cross over traffic and go back down to Robinson and Fifth. They can make the right turn and go out to that new connector over to Columbia. That in and of itself is going to relieve likely 50% of the congestion at Robinson and Fifth Street. And again, I've got my traffic engineer here to speak to that in detail. This would be Fourth Street on our property. This shows the realignment and the additional property that's going to be provided to the woods. We'll have a sidewalk, we've got street trees, we've got, conceptually, that split rail fence and shrubbery shown. Now, I do want to point out that these are artist renderings, however, they are to scale, and this is an accurate representation of the product that's part of our application. But the street trees, these are canopy trees. We did not want to create any misperceptions and show you mature canopy trees that are 20, 30, 40-foot canopies, which these are a lot that you turn into, but these trees that we're showing along the roadways are approximately two years after planning. So please keep that in mind when you take a look at these renderings. This would be one of the driveways of the woods street. The other thing we are, have agreed to do is when we do this urban section, we are only putting parallel parking on the north side. We're not putting any parallel parking on the south side in front of the woods homes. Again, there's another driveway. This is the entrance off of Columbia with our new connector road. We are proposing some identification signage out there, which will meet your code requirements. As you drive in from Columbia, there'll be a centralized parking area and the recreation area. Now, the advantage to this being open to the public, we understand that some of the kids that are dropped off on Fifth Street right now, there's a small sliver of open space on the south side of Fifth Street, and parents are dropping their kids off, and the kids are sitting there, standing there on that public road. This provides another public opportunity for them to drop their kids off at a park and a playground. This gives you a little different Uh, this gives you a little different angle view. There's the clubhouse, the pool, playground, the barbecue area, and this shows you just the start of that lakefront park. That gives you an idea of internal roads. As staff has pointed out, we've got front access and rear access product. Rear access, or the front-loaded product is limited to our, uh, uh, perimeter because this would be the buffer at our southwest corner. This is the western road where we have side product on one side and front-loaded on the western property line. But there's the buffer along the western property line. That's that six-foot, extension of that six-foot fence, the shrubs, the canopy trees. Uh, we've got a parking, uh, lot over on the west side. Again, we're continuing that same buffer treatment along the parking lot. The buffer continues along the north property line. The parking lot up there, again, that's the same buffer. This is at our northeast corner, looking back to the west, where we've continued that fence, that shr- and the shrub plantings and the tree plantings. Now, this is the area over on our northeast side, north of that connector road, where we do have mature vegetation that's being preserved. We will put the, we are proposing that we will put the fence in there to restrict access into that area for, you know, maintenance purposes, but we're not looking to put the plantings on that fence area. That's the only section that we're asking for an exception of the plantings. Now, this gives you an idea of our central park area. I want to point out these units around the park, they're on a muse. That's a actual front of these townhome units that actually front onto that lakefront park. Now, that's done at an expense to the developer, but that does increase property value and helps maintain some property value. It all, it also provides a different style product that most, a lot of developers won't absorb the cost for, this client has. But again, I want to point out that these are to scale. So when you look at some of the magnitude of this central park that's open to the public, that's about a four-acre pond. We've got a half-acre trail around it. Our recreation area is centralized to it and connects to it. Uh, again, there's another vision of the lakefront park with the muse products along the, the park boundaries. Um, I don't need to go through any of these details, except that I do want, just to reiterate, the current professional uses, permitted uses are likely to create much more impact and be much more out of character than the residential character of this property. I am available for questions. If, uh, you have any of me now, I, I do have, um, my client's legal counsel that would like to address the counsel.
I'll go ahead, Mr. Gilbert.
Yes, uh, Mr. Adams, uh, we had met, uh, earlier this week with your staff and your client, uh, and you'd informed me that, uh, you had an agreement with the Osso School Board that they would change the delivery and pickup of the children. Would that be possible to provide us a document, written document, uh, for that, so we can move forward to know? Because I went there after our meeting and sat through the, uh, the outgoing after-school to see how that happened. So if you could provide me a document with that, because you said there's an agreement that you have, but you said the cart before the horse, that you need to purchase this before they do it. So if we could get a written agreement, I'd appreciate that. Also, um, at the end of your presentation, you gave me some unsolicited advice. You said, "If I do not agree with you, then I could go to Osso School Board, buy the land and build a park." Uh, I appreciate your advice, your unsolicited advice, but I do not need it.
Okay.
Okay? Uh, you, you can advise me all you want, but is that something your client said? If this doesn't work, then I should go and buy the, because I like parks. And I think there's more parks needed because of the growing of St. Cloud. So, uh, I, I don't know why you advised me of that, but I appreciate your advice, but in the future, if I do not need your unsel- unsolicited advice, okay?
I appreciate that, and I meant no offense, sir.
Oh, it, I do not need your advice.
Okay, understood.
All right? Thank you. But thank you for advising, if I don't go along with your project plan, that, what I can do.
Understood.
I, I've got decisions to make on behalf of the citizens of St. Cloud that elected me, and that's what I'm going to make those decisions on.
Understood.
Uh, great property, great ideas. I drove around it, spent six hours there. That's pretty much all the questions I have. I'd like something in writing that the school board will redirect.
I'd like to, if, if, at your discretion, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, bring up a representative of the school board to address that specifically.
Good evening. Rhonda Blake, Director of Planning Services for the school district. I can tell you, we currently have one-point-five million dollars funded in our five-year plan to address this, but that money is earmarked based on the sale of the property. So without the sale of the property, we would not be able to move forward with the new queuing design.
Well, thank you very much. I would just, for some odd reason, I'd like something in writing that there's something going on, because hearsay is just that, verbal is just that, something in writing that says...
What we could provide you is just something that the money's in the budget, but no agreements until the funding's available.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Can I ask Ms. Blake something?
Councilmember Latheny?
Thank you, sorry. Before she gets too far. So you mentioned that it's in the five-year plan. If the sale does go through and this happens, where is it in the five-year plan?
Um, as soon, so right now, if the sale goes through in August, we would actually plan on doing our work beginning, um, the following summer, provided they're moving forward with their road network at the same time, because we got to, we have to build off of their road network. But we're ready to move as fast as they're ready to move on the Robinson improvements.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
May I ask a school question as well? So, Lakeview Elementary, in which I'm an alumni of, uh, Lakeview Dolphins.
Just last week.
Do they, uh... Do they have any, is there not expected to be a need for expansion of Lakeview Elementary in the future?
No, based on the restrictions of the property and the way it is currently designed, we do not have any expansion in that area in our five-year plan.
Okay.
Okay, we'll have public comment at this point. I have a item that was sent in and, uh, by Linda Blair, who lives at three-hundred Chancellor Court. Uh, and she said she'd like to know what the plan is for the area where we live, would like to know what types of buffer separate the project from my property, as it is not clear on the plan, and recommend only single-story individual homes, not townhomes. Thank you. Barbara Gilbert, we'll take public comment at this point.
And we have quite a few, so I will ask that you hold your comments to three minutes, max.
Absolutely. My name is Barbara Gilbert. I live at six-six-zero-five Mitchell Wood Court, St. Cloud, Florida. I used to live on, my kids also went to Lakeview. My big concern is, as you see, St. Cloud, we're going so fast and we don't have schools for these kids to go to, and you're adding kids. And, um, my daughter used to ride her bike at Lakeview, and you, and you add more cars, we're got more danger. And we don't have patrol vans sitting at each corner for our kids to be. And I, I can't believe how fast we're growing, but I think we need to worry about putting schools in for these kids. I mean, I'm also a mother of six children and thirteen grandkids and two great-grandkids. Uh, so I don't personally have kids going to school, except for my grandkids, uh, but I do exchange students. And the schools are so full that we can't hardly get exchange students in the schools. And that's a shame, because they have a lot to, to give to our schools. They're very smart kids and have a lot to offer. So I think that is the big problem I have with it. I don't live there anymore. Uh, I used to live, uh, Louisiana Avenue, uh, but I think with the school situation we have, building more is not the best.
Thank you. Teresa Milhot? It's, it's not appropriate to collapse, I suggest you please refrain from that, please. Teresa Milhot?
Teresa Milhot, two-nine-two-four, Colby Circle. I am here to speak on ordinance twenty-twenty-three-twenty and twenty-twenty-three-twenty-one, the Heritage Crossing Development. I am so concerned with safety issues due to overcrowding in the Lakeview Elementary area. Adding two-hundred more townhomes plus approximately five-hundred cars, maybe, is an accident waiting to happen. I believe about ten years ago, a crossing guard was hit there at Fifth Street and Columbia and had her arm broke. Not the one on Michigan Avenue, this was prior, before her. And I myself, that live in this area, have been, had people speed past me on Columbia because I'm doing twenty-five. People, I've almost been T-boned twice at Columbia and Fifth Street. The traffic is outrageous there. And truthfully, if they, even if they build that road to, uh, Columbia Avenue, you're still going to have to get out on Lake Shore Boulevard, which you cannot do. When that bridge over the canal is open, you cannot get out on Lake Shore Boulevard. It needs a light there, and probably Brown Chapel, too. Adding all this will only increase the gridlock of traffic. Columbia is already a racetrack. We don't need to add any more cars to it. Pickup and drop-off, Mr. Gilbert was there, you saw that mess? It's horrible. Homeowners along Fifth Street were mad because people were parking in their yards. Uh, we've had several incidents there, people cutting in line. It seems, and also, my second big concern is drainage, the water. Remember a few years ago when we had sewer, sewage running down Columbia Avenue out of the manhole covers? I do. The city had to put showers and toilet facilities, stage them at the lakefront park for citizens to go down there to use, because we had water, sewage on the road. Toilet paper, feces, running down Columbia Avenue. Fifth Street floods constantly. We know in last October, my, they had to evacuate part of Sugar Mills Mobile Home Park. Um, we were under, that was mandatory, we were under, uh, evacuate now if you want to, because you might, because there was flooding. I can't tell you how traumatic that was for me, having to go down and do so many sandbags over and over and over, get plastic sheeting, put it around my house, just in case we were going to flood. It was traumatic. It's traumatic for old people, but you don't have any youthful people around to help you I just cannot see how you all can put two-hundred more homes in that small area. And I know I'm running out of time, so I'm going to talk real quick, so you don't...
No, ma'am, you need, I'm going to give you fifteen more seconds, finish up, okay? I have a lot to speak.
Okay. So, I agree with Mr. Gilbert. The city should buy that property and make it a park.
Thank you.
It's a perfect area. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Crane?
Hi.
Hello.
Thank you for letting me speak. Karen Crane, seven-oh-two Alabama Avenue.
Thank you.
I drive through this area at least two to seven times a day. I don't live very far. He shows on paper that it's all yellow, all medium density, so, you know, to change it. I disagree with that, because those homes are all one-story, single-family detached homes in the area, smaller homes. Um, the, uh, they want to add seven-hundred more people. That's going to be a lot more cars, and it's going to, going to impact the safety of our children that are walking down those streets. I mean, right now, you got to go five miles an hour, there's so much traffic, and the kids walking and riding their bikes and running around. Um, it gets congested a lot during the day that we're backed up with the streets we have and the four, the two four-way stops right now. You add two more four-way stops down there, I don't care if they're, you know, how many blocks they are, there are more stops and more congestion with the cars. Every part of that area is not going to look the same as that. He says it's not going to impact St. Cloud, because he's going on the big number, but it's going to impact that area a lot. And all of us that live in that area, it's going to be a mess. It's going to be messed with drainage, it's going to be messed with the cars, with the people there, with the construction, how we're going to get in and out of our houses with the construction. And I do agree that it's, uh, we need a park, a park or more schools, and you put all those people in there, they need schools. Now, you're not going to increase, uh, schools in, you know, classrooms in Lakeview, but you're going to put more people there, so then they're going to what? Have to walk down to the highway to another school and impact that. Uh, those schools there, that just doesn't make sense to me. It's a neighborhood school, a little neighborhood area, and it doesn't need what, what, that area does not need what he's showing right now. Thank you very much, Tom.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Melanie Herman. I live at thirty-one-thirty-three Garden Court. Um, good evening. My name is Melanie Herman, and I live near the proposed development. While there are many reasons that the residents would like to see better infrastructure before more houses in St. Cloud, I would like to mention the impact that this development would have on Lakeview Elementary. Not only would more housing put more cars on these two-lane roads, but obviously overcrowd this already crowded school. Lakeview is almost a hundred students over capacity without these new houses. This and every other school in the county, it seems, is out of money. We still have over a month left of school, and there is no money left. Schools are bartering with other schools to trade trash bags for toilet paper. The PTO at Lakeview Elementary has to buy a vacuum cleaner for our janitorial staff because there's no money left in their budget. What's worse is that not only can the school not handle more students, but you are asking them to give up some of their recess and PE fields to build a road to this development. This school is already tight on space. Many children have to have their recess in the bus loop on concrete. The growth in this town is out of control with things that need to be fixed before having more people move here. We can't even get the city to put up flashing lights on Fifth Street to warn drivers that they need to slow down for the school. We are the only school in Osceola County that does not have flashing lights in front of our school. We are so lucky that the student that got hit by a car a couple weeks ago is okay and not more injured. The safety of our children should be more important to every resident. This bare land will no doubt be turned into housing, but can we ask the council to consider turning this land into a park? If not, can we postpone until the infrastructure is corrected? We need better roads and more schools. Can we not plan and prepare instead of repairing after the fact? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Thank you for hearing me out. Uh, Desiree Dotson, three-oh-seven Columbia Avenue. Um, if you take a look at that map, that Columbia is right near our house, actually. Um, so the reason why we came down, I, I don't usually come to these meetings, I don't usually hear, I hear usually second-hand what's going on in our town. This personally affects us, so of course, I wanted to come down and have a voice. There are other things that you can do with the land, but that aside, if this does go through and you guys do accept it, I'm going to ask, because I try to ask zoning, I'm going to ask that they put speed bumps all throughout that development there and all the way down Robinson, all the way down Fourth Street and all the way down Columbia, and it's for the safety. If you guys want, at some point, I can give it to you through email. I have videos of all of the cars that pass by our house. So I see, people use Lake Shore, they actually don't use Thirteenth Street as much as they use Lake Shore. And right now, the only reason why they can't use it is because that little bridge is closed off. Um, so we're, we're pretty much the gainway. If you want to go anywhere in town, it's usually down Columbia or the state streets, and they don't follow the speed limits. So most of the time, the kids that come out of school are riding their bikes or they're walking. I see a bunch of kids come out and walk down the road. Um, our neighbor beside us told me about a week ago that her little one, Bella, was going down. Um, she was riding her bike, she almost got hit right outside of the driveway, because I don't know if it was a teacher or if it was a parent, didn't look both ways before turning. And so their grandmother actually had to yell at the person because they didn't pay attention. So, speed bumps, and if you're going to have it right near the school like that, then yeah, you're going to need something that signifies that it's a school zone, flashing lights. People need to pay attention, there needs to be more... People need to pay attention, there needs to be more patrolling because they are speeding way too much. I just want to put it out there, not only a park, but you could also do like a food forest or like a community garden. Because yeah, we have enough people here already and it is a safety concern, but there are other things that you can do besides retail and other businesses. Because I don't know about our town really, we've been living here like 10 years, I could probably say most of the people either work in Orlando or Kissimmee. They don't work here because there's no money here. So, I'm just throwing that out there. So, we probably need to kind of fix the infrastructure here before trying to grow. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Karen Seddon.
Good evening, my name is Karen Seddon, I live at 3114 Garden Court, right behind that little space there on the south side. I just wanted to tell you all that it's fun to see your faces because I went on the website and I've been praying for each of you by name. And certainly I'm praying that you say no, obviously. But the reason that I come here is because we have lived on our little, cute little Garden Court, it's just a U-shaped street next to Chancellor and next to Robinson, it's in between the two. And over the 35 years that we've lived there, we have built a beautiful prayer garden, we have a meditation garden and we have a praise garden now too with, it's just peaceful, it's beautiful. And I invite you to come. I invite you to come and walk Fourth Street, I know some of you may have, and I prayer walk that street every morning now because there's inherently something wrong with this. That's what everybody's trying to say. That plan is beautiful, but it doesn't belong there. I mean, I want you all to come, I want your, I don't remember what they called it, the advisory committee. The planning committee, to our shock, denied it for the reason everybody's heart was basically broken. You know, this just doesn't belong there. I think that the builder could take it somewhere else and do just a beautiful job, I don't know where that would be, nobody wants something like that in their backyard, but other places like that. Because we have small homes, you know, little driveways and little, little beautiful homes, all in there and mobile homes. None of that is multiple use, it's just regular people. So I do encourage you to say no and I pray for you every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. David Woods.
Thank you, council. My name's David Woods, 3113 Fourth Street, St. Cloud, Florida. Been a resident for 34 years there. My kids also went to Lakeview Elementary. Great presentation, Mr. Williams, fantastic. I like the concessions made to the Woods family, that's all of us that live on that street. My mom's 94, she lives at the end, my daughter lives next to me, I live there too. But I think our goal is to limit the growth, at least like some people suggested, the green space, parks, at the minimum, single home, detached homes there. On April 18th, the planning commission denied it, but then, is the staff different than the planning commission? One can overrule the other, I'm kind of confused there. But they were concerned with the traffic and the drainage and a couple of other things, I was at that meeting. The developer says entry roads they plan will help traffic. How can it help when potential 800 cars will be on the road going the same place as residents? 192 and Lake Shore. Eventually to the Turnpike and/or Narcoosi, already a congested nightmare. They also say we need the revenue to improve the roads, but we all know that it's the cat chasing its tail. Roads need improved before the more growth. We've done a change.org petition that resulted in over 1,266 replies against proposal and growth in general. And I also have some signed petitions from the residents that live in the area I'd like to submit, about 70 here. And I, pretty much everything that I was going to talk about has already been said. I just would like to remind our new commissioners on their campaign talking points to slow development. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Amber Flowers.
Hello, my name is Amber Flowers, 3001 Fourth Street, St. Cloud, Florida. I've lived on Fourth Street for my entire 33 years, I live directly across from the land in discussion. I, like so many others, am strongly against this zoning change for the land development. We do have a signed petition, like you said, with over 1,200 signatures from residents of St. Cloud. I believe that the current residents should be taken care of before bringing in hundreds more. We have water, sewage, drainage and traffic issues that are far from being resolved. I see complaints of residents still experiencing flooding issues and periodically having to boil water from unsafe water supplies. This development will only add to these life impacting issues. Our safety and health should take priority over money and land development. Do you know that it currently takes me 30 minutes to get to the Turnpike every morning, which is three miles from my house? Once I get on the Turnpike, it takes me the same amount of time to get to downtown Orlando for work. 30 minutes. So I can travel to Orlando in the same amount of time it takes me to travel three miles in St. Cloud. If you allow these townhomes to be built, you are introducing potentially more than 800 cars to our overly crowded roads. Instead of bringing more business to St. Cloud, we only see more homes. That means the majority of these people travel to Orlando and surrounding areas for work. That means more crowded roads, more delay in travel time and more danger to our community with unsafe roads. That doesn't even cover the local roads surrounding this land where we don't have pavement markings and we lack sidewalks. These are small-town streets that you want to accommodate big city numbers. This is extremely dangerous for our children and pedestrians, especially next to an elementary school. By the time the city's road and drainage improvement plans complete, in estimated five to seven years, we'll have even more residents that require more improvements at that time. It's an endless cycle that won't ever catch up because the city's prioritizing the wrong thing. And the overcrowded schools is an entirely separate issue that a lot of people have mentioned. Lakeview Elementary School will have to accommodate the children of 198 families and displace others due to zoning. This would impact elementary schools all across the city that are already at capacity. That's not even considering that multifamilies will most likely rent these townhomes as well due to economy and pricing. Two-story townhomes will have a direct view into the school and surrounding homes. Total lack of privacy and concern for safety. As a very soon-to-be mom, I would love to focus, see our focus shift for the upcoming generation. More focus on their safety, health and opportunities for better lifestyle choices. As many mentioned, this land could be beneficial as green space, a park, activity and sports fields, community garden or resources, or even keeping the land for an expanding elementary school, which we know we will all need. Please protect us, the current residents, and improve our living circumstances instead of adding to our already frustrating and unsafe issues. We know you hear the complaints and now is the chance to listen to the people.
Thank you, Amber.
And if you need the petition, I can submit these.
Give it to the clerk, please. Jack Seddon.
Don't get old. Jack Seddon, 3114 Garden Court, St. Cloud, Florida. Let's say there's a fire in a single-family, one-story building. Fire truck number one gets on scene and they get a 360, oh pardon me, 360 survey of that building. They have no problem doing it, easy access. Now, I went and I got a document here from Fire and Rescue Departments of Northern Virginia. And they made a manual, 54 pages, firefighting and emergency operations manual. One of the key things in there, they, they talk about townhouses, townhomes in particular, is inherent firefighting problems. Take a look at that right there. How do you get a fire truck behind some of those buildings? Let's say you have a fire in the end, the end, you can get one, two, three eyes on that, but you can't get the fourth eye because it's the common wall. And if you're unfortunate enough to be in a middle section, you can only get two eyes on it. So the fire, that's one of the inherent problems because they share a common roof. And that is inherently what's wrong with that proposal. I'm not against development. Single-family homes, no problem. But that is, like I said before, it just seems to be a recipe for something bad to go wrong. And just as a personal note, 35 years ago, we came to St. Cloud, Florida. There was a cross on the tower, water tower, and there was a motto, which I took to be like a promise, "St. Cloud, the city that celebrates small-town life." And I said to Karen, I said, "I can invest in that." You know, we've been here 35 years. And I remember, in the first Christmas Day parade, I said to my wife Karen, I said, "I feel like I'm in a Norman Rockwell painting." It's just, that's gone. You used to be able to get around in St. Cloud. There was dirt roads, we lived on a dirt road. But I think this is a bad plan and I'd like to live up to that promise of St. Cloud, a city that celebrates small-town life.
Thank you, Jack. Carl Owens.
My name is Carl Owens, I live at 2954 Coolbreeze Circle. And I must say, I think everybody's already stole my thunder, but... Ladies and gentlemen, I came here to address you concerning ordinance 2023-20 and 2023-21. Are there 198 homes to be built as low-income? Do they remove Lakeside Elementary? What are the, what's the infrastructure? We're already suffering from the seemingly permanent closing of Lake Shore Drive at Brown Chapel. In short, we look at at least two years of noise, dust and heavy truck, truck, truck traffic and 20 years of traffic nightmares. I ask you, please do not do this to our neighborhood. We also need to know what the new roads will be doing going into this subdivision, but that's somewhat been answered. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Owens. Is anyone else wishing to speak to this item? That hasn't spoken? You have something you'd add?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Please take your name and address.
My name is Brenda Gines, I live on 313 Chancellor Court, St. Cloud, Florida. That's right by Lakeview Elementary, I've been there for over like 13 years. My husband's lived there in that house longer than I have. And so I have a few things. I, my family, we're seven fam, seven people and living in one house. I have neighbors that are six, living in one house, four, five members living in one house. Most of the houses around there are three-bedroom homes. Okay? And only to mention a few people in the neighborhood. I bring this up because Lakeview Elementary, can it will become overpopulated with students? If the property around the school is sold, how can the school expand to meet the demand of incoming students? There's also no sidewalk on Fifth Street from McKay Ave to Robinson. There's no sidewalks on the right-hand side of that road for students to come. So they only use one sidewalk, riding bicycles, there's heavy traffic, they're consistently between Chancellor Court all the way to Robinson. There's certain, in the morning and in the afternoon, there's, there are a lot of homeowners in the area and this development most likely will bring a lot of renters. And the mentality of renters as opposed to homeowners is very different. As of late, there's been a lot of defacing of property around 313, around the community. Graffiti on stop signs, graffiti on our mailboxes. My son, I have five children, from elementary, three in elementary, two in high school. And at the bus stop from Garden Court and Fifth Street, he had his bookbag stolen. He left it there and he walked for a moment and came back, it was gone, it was stolen. None of that, we had none of those concerns, you know, about 10 years ago of, of, of people and crime and, and you know, they found the criminal, it was an adult male. But I mean, where are these people coming from? And, you know, I don't believe it's a great idea, especially because of the congestion and bringing new people who have no ties to the community. I'm sorry, I'm a little anxious. So I just believe that, as the last gentleman said, keep of the community, small-town living. You know, it's, it was safe, it's not getting safe, it's, it's getting worse. And more people means more crimes, more problems, more graffiti, more congestion, more students and less teachers and no time to address these problems. The plan looks wonderful, but the reality is different. Thank you.
Could you please see the clerk and fill out a form, please? Is there anyone else? Do you have something you'd add?
Yep.
Okay.
Hello, Jesse Gines, 313 Chancellor Court, Nathan, you were a neighbor for a long time. As you can see, I don't think anybody in any of the areas that you've addressed.
Sir, you need to address the council, please.
Sir. Any of the things that he's mentioned, I don't see anybody that came up here and said they were happy about it. Not one soul. This is obviously going to cause an incredible amount of congestion in the area, but this gentleman says he believes. He believes that it won't. Now, we don't have any evidence, as you've stated, we have no preliminary showing exactly what's going to go on, what roads are going to be made. Is Chancellor Court going to remain a cul-de-sac? Are they going to chop that down? Are we going to still have that area for my kids to play back there, which is a field? My mom lives on Columbia Avenue, right there. She's very concerned as well, everybody's concerned. I propose that this be bought by the, by the city and be into a park as well. We have a lot of children. Besides all the population that it's going to bring, all that population comes with children as well and they're going to have to go to school. And these schools are overpopulated, just to be reiterating what was said already. So, we're highly disagreeing with, with this proposal. It's preposterous and to consider this in that area is just flat-out wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, please see the clerk.
Dale McGow, 923 Robinson Avenue. With the configuration, the reconfiguration of Robinson, we've got traffic now that is kind of out. It turns into a speed track. At 7:30, the teachers are late and they're going way above the speed limit of 25. And at 8 o'clock, it's, it's the parents dropping the students off who are running late and so they're going above the traffic speed limit of 25. We don't have sidewalks on Robinson, so where are people going to walk? Children walk on that road, elderly walk on that road, they take their pets for a walk. There are no sidewalks, so what are we going to do on Robinson when we double, triple, quadruple the number of traffic, the, the number of cars and vehicles on that road? That's all I want to ask.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll have the applicant again. Mr. Moody?
Again, for the record, John Adams, RJ Williams.
I called you Moody.
That's okay.
I was thinking about John earlier.
We look alike. We have committed to the roadway improvements that we have shown on the map. Those roadways will be a full urban section as required by your code. We will be installing sidewalks, travel lanes, now whether they're 10-foot travel lanes, 11-foot or 12-foot travel lanes, that comes at a later date. But we will be required by your code to actually increase the right-of-way to fit all those improvements in there. And it's not that I believe this is going to help the traffic situation, it absolutely will relieve some of the traffic. It will not solve all of the traffic countywide or central Florida-wide, but there's other things that are happening in Osceola County. They're completing now what's called the SEETS study, Southeast Area Transportation Study. They're assigning improvements, they're coming up with the schedule of those improvements. They're assigning it to the different developers that are over in your mixed-use districts and your JPA area to the south of the city. The Turnpike Authority is relocating or rerouting, new NOLTE... The Turnpike Authority is relocating or rerouting New Nolte Road and moving a full intersection up onto the Turnpike from where it is now at Kissimmee Park Road. All those things are happening. How do you fix the roadway network? Well, there's one way. You allow growth to pay mobility fees. The second thing growth does is makes improvements to existing networks, like we are proposing here, Fourth Street, Robinson Avenue, the connector over to Columbia. We're putting those sidewalks in. We buy code are required to have safe design. The third thing we're doing is creating tax dollars, new taxpayers. This property will generate, very conservatively, seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year, of which two-hundred thousand plus comes to the city of St. Cloud every year in ad valorem taxes. That's considering market price and the exemption, the fifty-thousand-dollar reduction in assessed value. It's a very conservative number. That's how, or that is how cities and governments fix existing problems. They generate tax dollars, new tax dollars, to pay for those improvements. As far as the school capacity, we've had the school board reviewing our plan as they are required to by code. We are paying school impact fees, some of the highest in the state, for every unit. And we cannot get ACO, a Certificate of Occupancy, until such time that we fully mitigate any improvements that are necessary to the school. I heard a couple different times about expanding the school. The school board has already noticed, put notice to the state, that it is surplus property. They are required by law to dispose of the property, meaning they're not going to expand the school. They're not going to build a middle school here, which would create even more problems. But the school board has the opportunity, especially in some of your mixed-use districts that you've just annexed in and then further to the south in your JPA, to locate new schools, to redistrict kids in schools, to handle that capacity, and that's something that they manage... Well, they are responsible for managing that. We're responsible for paying the impact fees.
John, may I jump in for one second?
Sure, absolutely.
On the same topic, staff inadvertently did not give the school capacity report to the city council while you were talking. The deputy city clerk did just pass it out. So I just wanted to let the council know that that was from the school district and they did notify us earlier today that it was not in the package.
Well, I'm glad they're doing their job. Thank you. And again, this is a preliminary development or preliminary master plan. We have a second reading scheduled for May twenty-fifth. And then you will see a final master plan, which is subject to your review as well. I do, again, want to introduce our traffic engineer. And, oh, my client's legal counsel, Joe Thacker. Unless there's any other...
There'll be some questions.
Questions for me. Okay.
Joe, do you have something with Thacker?
Joe Thacker, seventeen, South Orlando Avenue, Kissimmee. I just wanted to address a couple of the items that came up during the public discussion. These are single-family fee simple. So they won't be rentals, they won't be low-income, they're market. And they're, so they're owned, just like any other single-family home would be owned. They also would be subject to all fire safety rules and would have to follow everything according to your state fire code and your local fire code. The other thing that I wanted to point out, because this is already zone professional, without any other action by this council, there's a lot that could be built. What this applicant has done is come in and said, this is what we will build. This is a known, what could be built. It's not a guess about what may happen. They've come in and presented a plan that shows you how the traffic will be done. They've gone over and above what they are required to do on their transportation. They've tried to take into consideration the impact it'll have on the adjacent neighbors. They've put in buffers where they, even though it's the same use, side-by-side, they've added in buffers. They've added in more open space. They've added in more amenities. And they've tried to make this be a very good infill property. It's going to get developed somehow, some way, because the school district needs to sell it. So this gives you the opportunity to know exactly how it would be developed and how it could benefit the city and the surrounding residents. The plan is different in that the townhomes face this big pond, this amenity, with the ability for the public to also enjoy more sidewalks. Everybody said there were no sidewalks down Robinson. There will be, because Robinson's going to be improved. On the schools, real quick, there is capacity already there in Lakeview. They will pay impact fees. The school district has adopted one-hundred percent impact fees. Every new single-family pays for the students it will generate for their capital needs. One-hundred percent. And that's why the school district has money now to build new schools. So it's not that there's any overcrowding problem with this development. The other thing that I just wanted to ask is that you consider all of the extra things that this developer has put in front of you. They are open to having further discussions, especially with the Woods family, to try to make this as least impactful as possible. And I know if you have any questions concerning the transportation drainage or some other things, we're happy to discuss those with you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mr. Adams?
Yes, I'm available for questions. I would like to add one thing. I know there's perhaps some compatibility concern. You have townhomes already existing, two blocks away on Fifth Street. You have townhomes on Aron Brown. You have townhomes in Chatham Park off of Pleasant Hill. You have townhomes in Turtle Creek. There are multiple townhomes in the Narcousie Community area. You have townhomes in Tahoe. You have townhomes in Kindred. You have townhomes in the Edgewater that you just annexed in. Townhomes, fee simple townhomes are absolutely, the market has proven, compatible price-wise and lifestyle-wise with single-family detached. I'd just like to point that out. And I do, again, if there's any specific drainage and/or traffic questions, we do have our experts here.
Thank you. Councilmember Fletcher?
The first thing I'd like to say is thank you, everybody, for taking time to participate, you know, in your local government and spend time with us here this evening regarding this. I did have a question for the school board representative that was here, if she could. There was a comment that you had made the last time that you came up that the school was not looking to expand on this property due to restrictions. What were those restrictions?
I said restrictions, I didn't mean to.
Please come to the mic, please.
Yeah. If I said restrictions, I didn't mean to. Currently, in our five-year capital improvement plan, we have no plans to expand in this area.
Okay. I thought there might be some type of restrictions on the property.
No.
Where you could not build a school, which I was going to kind of link back to the whole office use thing. So that's all I have for you.
Okay.
I do have concerns with the drainage and the flooding. We all know Blackberry Creek and the flooding issues that we had regarding that. I also have issues with, even though on the map, and it's all yellow and it's MDR, the majority of the homes that are built there are single-family detached or basically duplexes, which is not townhomes. And then traffic concerns with the existing available roadway network that is there now. When this gets built, there's a lot of stuff in the pipeline, but it's not built now and it's going to be a while. Also, you know, we spend part of our day reviewing, you know, land development applications and approvals, while also juggling police, fire, EMS services for our residents. Regarding the school traffic concerns, I think the school board needs to get their traffic problems under control. You know, if they're having issues with their traffic, they still need to go and reroute their traffic on their own site, whether this development get taken care of or not. I don't know how all of that works, but that's what I think. I also did speak with the applicant and the residents. And I do have concerns about this. And with that, I make a motion for denial.
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
We need to allow further discussions, sir.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. There was a question about drainage. I do have a drainage exhibit and I can bring the civil engineer that's currently been working with South Florida Water Management and designing the drainage system, if you would like to hear that.
You're welcome to do so.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Kirby White, ten ninety-two, Whiting Water Circle, Winter Park. Civil engineer for the client. I would like to point out, with this development, like Mr. Adams stated, we're proposing a four-acre lake, which is, will be a stormwater management pond. This four-acre lake will serve the development along with the external roads that we're improving. It will also serve the four lots fronting on Fourth Street, which are Mr. Woods'. The four-acre lake will provide about sixteen-acre feet of storage, which is equal to five million gallons of water, which we have zero today. So this, in my mind, will improve storage within this area. The map shown on the screen that Mr. Adams put up is our proposed system to pick up the off-site drainage and take it around our site and discharge it into the northern ditch where it currently goes today. This will be a pipe system. It will be a much better system than a vegetated ditch that currently exists on the property today. And it's, the ditch is unmaintained. This will be a clean conduit and it should provide much better results at the end of the project.
Please, you have anything else? Any other questions? Councilmember Urban?
Yes, thank you. I'd just first like to say I did meet with the applicant, discussed many of the items that were brought up this evening and also spoke with a few residents who were concerned about this. Thank you for everyone for speaking tonight. I know it takes a lot of courage to get up and speak, especially if you're not used to it. So thank you for that. We, I would agree with Councilmember Fletcher that the school board should be able to handle their traffic flow with or without this development. I know it's an issue at several schools. I did hear a lot about the schools being overcrowded and the schools can't handle it. I just wanted to point out, we're not the school board. I don't, I can't speak for them. And the reason that we're here today talking about this is because the school board is selling this property. So I would love for this to be green space or to be a park. But if the city bought every proposed development, we'd be out of money. That wouldn't be very financially responsible for the city if we bought it and turned it into a park, even though I would love that. I've lived here my entire life. I would love for it to go back to the way it was in the nineties, where it was more cow pastures and houses. But fortunately, that ship has sailed. And one of the things that also, sorry. Yeah, one of the big concerns that I have too, and it's already been discussed, is that I have no doubt, and I'm not a civil engineer, I have no doubt that this development will handle its drainage well. But this whole area was a big problem during, or after Hurricane Ian, when there was voluntary evacuations and everything in this area. And I would just like to see those issues fixed. I know we're working with several federal grants to hopefully get these issues fixed, but I would like to see them fixed before we potentially add more to that. Even though I'm not a civil engineer, so maybe that can be spoken to as well. But I just, I do have concerns about this. And I'd like to open it up for more council discussion.
Mr. Fletcher, your line is still on? Do you have any other questions? Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. So I'm going to reiterate what my other councilmembers say. Thank you, everybody, for staying. I know it gets late and everybody has to work tomorrow, I'm sure. So I think a lot of really good points were brought up by the citizens today. And I've driven through it too. Like, you know, when school's letting out, it's unbelievable. I just, I feel sorry for everyone who lives along that route and has to drive through that route. And I'm going to support Mr. Fletcher's motion.
First of all, last of all, I'd like to thank everyone who came and offered your concerns. You know, it's a real frustrating thing setting up here on the council, making decisions such as this. Because part of my frustration that we have is this property is going to be sold. And sometimes you think you're making a decision that's going to be in the best interest of your community and then end up making a mistake. And I think if a commercial developers buy this property and develop it commercially, as it could be, you're going to have a much bigger problem than you would have with this development. The numbers just don't lie, they're there. I'm very familiar with this property because I lived on Chancellor Court myself for twenty-seven years. I know the frustration of traffic twice a day as people were coming to school and leaving the school. There's nothing we're going to do to stop the speeding. You are going to, you're going to have dumb people driving all the time. This development, one way or the other, is not going to change that. The problem with the traffic was that there wasn't adequate stacking provisions made when this property was first developed as a school. And, you know, if this gets denied, which it appears it's going to be, it's not going to change your traffic problem. This proposal that they presented before you would definitely alleviate at least the traffic problem with traffic backing up there because I dealt with that for over twenty-five years. And so you're going to continue to have that. Is that as this is developed, you know, we can't turn it into a park. We don't have the money, just like Mr. Councilman Urban made the point. If we developed every, bought every piece of property, everyone says we ought to turn it into a park. That's all we'd have in our city would be parks. You know, it takes a lot of, lot of money to purchase a park, to develop the park. And we're dealing with that right now with all the parks that we have. And so I understand your frustration. But I think you're going to end up with a worse situation when it become, if it goes commercial, which it's already qualified. And we won't even have any say-so in that. So we have a motion for denial from Councilmember Fletcher. You still stand by that motion, I assume?
Yes, sir.
We have another, do I have a second?
Yes, I did.
We have a second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
No.
Motion carries four-one.
And Mayor, for purpose of the record, can we get a motion on item, the second item also?
Could I have a motion for the second item, item number five? Which...
Ordinance Twenty-Twenty-three.
Which is ordinance number Twenty-Twenty-three dash twenty-one. Could I have a motion? Mr. Fletcher, you want to make a motion for denial for that?
Motion for denial.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
No.
Motion carries 4-1.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I indulge just for a minute? Understand your concerns, my question is, what do you want to see there? What would be acceptable? And if I could ask you all to think about that and to get with me when you have the opportunity before the next meeting, I would certainly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think they've heard you.
Since she said something, can I just ask a question?
No, sir, we're through with discussion on this issue. I'm sorry. Brings us to item number six, Madam Clerk, please read that into the record.
Public hearing for resolution number 2023-089R, a resolution for the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, adopting the substantial amendment to the fiscal year 2022 annual action plan for the community development block grant.
Carry your discussion. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Antoinette Forbes, Economic Development Director. This particular item is addressing the 2022 action plan amendment, just as some background, as part of CDBG funding, we did a consolidated plan process, that consolidated plan basically addresses what the needs are, it's basically findings of necessity that says here are the needs that are urgent in the city of St. Cloud for low-income persons and/or low-income areas. Part of that process also needs to be an annual action plan that is adopted, and so that action plan addresses how are we going to spend on programming the funding that we receive on an annual basis as an entitlement city? So, in previous years, we had been awarded some funding that at this point had gone unused, just again as some background, that annual action plan was approved in July 14th of 2022 via resolution 2022-070R. It was then amended in February, on February 9th, and that amendment was to address a reallocation of the categories, that it was going to go from economic development over to housing. And so, this amendment tends, is to address some prior year's fundings, 19 and 20, but it has to be addressed in the current action year, which is 2022. So, in 19, excuse me, 2019, there we were awarded $319,000, excuse me, $319,076, but there is a remaining balance of $207,399.60. In 2020, we were awarded $338,056, and there's a balance of $219,736.60. Our intention is to take those uncommitted funds for both the previous years, which total $427,136, and move them towards housing rehabilitation activities. There is an amendment that is required to do that, which is why we're here this evening, to use, utilize those unused dollars. Also part of that process, we have to do a public hearing, which is what this is, but we also have to have an open comment period, which we are currently in from April 10th through May 10th, it has been advertised as well, it is also placed on the website where people can reach out directly to my office to provide any comments that they have. I've mentioned that. And so, once it is approved, also once the comment period has closed, we would then submit that amendment to HUD through their IDIS system. Excuse me, we would submit that action plan for their ultimate approval, so that we can then begin expending those funds in the method that I address, which is housing rehabilitation. Staff recommends the approval of this resolution, 2023-089R, and requests the council's approval.
Thank you. Would any one of you all just like to speak to this item? If not, could we have a discussion on our motion by council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, Councilmember Urban, the second, by Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
The next item was council action, and there are no council action items at this time.
Mr. Menzares?
I do not have anything, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Manish, City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier tonight, Ms. Jones sang the praises of our IT director, Roberto, and I wanted to also share that this week, he helped us migrate the city from a legacy on-premise telephone system to a modern cloud-based communication system with enterprise-grade voice, video, and collaboration features, which allows city personnel to easily connect with each other, whether in the office, mobile, or remote. There's a lot of IT tech stuff here, I'm not going to read to you, but in short, this eliminates the need to hire a highly specialized telephony engineer slash administrator, and it brings us into compliance with federal and state regulations surrounding Kerry's Law and Ray Baum's Act. So, we're very excited, it was a lot of work for our IT department, they've been working hard all week long, so congratulations to them. Mr. Urban, did Main Street talk to you, ask you to present? I don't want to step on your toes.
Yeah, I have some items during my time for that.
I will not bring that up. And last, I sent an email to the council late today about the downtown Bollards. I did receive some feedback already, I don't know if you'd like for me to quickly tell you what the options are, or let you read it, and we can discuss it at the next council meeting? Read it or discuss?
Wait.
Okay. Is that everybody? Okay.
Thank you.
That's all, thank you.
Councilmember Matheny?
Well, I would like to continue my streak of saying I don't have anything, but all I want to say is how much I really enjoy serving with all of you. I really enjoy it, I really like how we do our business these days, and thank you.
Councilmember Urban?
Yeah, I would echo Councilmember Matheny's comments, we all, we're five independent minds up here who disagree, but we're respectful of each other, and I do enjoy serving with all of you as well. I also have, as Main Street's board representative, St. Cloud Main Street's representative, I have some information, I would like to invite you all to a celebration of Historic Preservation Month, if I could read this for you. Join us as we celebrate Historic Preservation Month with the unveiling of St. Cloud's historic plaques and Historic Preservation Awards programs, a collaboration between the city of St. Cloud and St. Cloud Main Street. Learn more about how you can obtain a plaque for your historic home, or how your property may be eligible for a Historic Preservation Award. This event will include a presentation titled Historic Preservation in Real Estate: What You Need to Know. The guest speaker will be Maria Shrive, a real estate professional and community activist with over 20 years of experience specializing in historic buildings, including hands-on rehab of over 15 historic buildings. So, they're just asking for Monday, May 15th, 6:00 PM at the VFW here in downtown St. Cloud, we would love for the whole city council to be there, and anybody in public, we would love you to be there to celebrate this with us. Look forward to seeing you.
I'll be there.
And that's all I have.
Excellent. Councilman Gilbert?
Uh-oh. I'm going to keep it short, Mayor Blackwell, I just want to give a belated happy birthday to one of the best police chiefs in the United States, and we appreciate your service.
Councilman Fletcher?
I want to echo the same comments that Councilwoman Matheny had said, not only is it great to work amongst, you know, with all of you guys, but our staff as well. I don't care where I go in the whole city, everybody is just, our staff is amazing, they really, really, really do a good job, and thank you for all your hard work, and happy birthday to the chief, really appreciate that, and that's all I have.
Should we sing happy birthday?
Oh, come on.
We don't want rude ones, do we?
Congratulations, and it is a joy working with the staff, you know, it's nice to be able to disagree and then still walk away and not be upset or angry with each other, and so I appreciate, I appreciate all the hard work that our staff does, I know it's disappointing, sometimes when you do a lot of work, that I know you just did on this other, and then you get it turned down, but we appreciate all the work that you guys do, thank you so much. With that, I don't have anything else, other than the, please remember National Day of Prayer, we certainly need to be praying for our country and our city. Brings us to our information and reports section. Thursday, May 11th, there will be a city council meeting at 6:30 PM here in council chambers. Thursday, May 18th, there will be a city council workshop at 3:00 PM in council chambers. Thursday, May 25th, there will be another council meeting at 6:30 PM here in council chambers. Monday, May 29th, the city offices will be closed in observance of the Memorial Day holiday. Proclamation was issued in recognition of the Global Day of Love, also issued a proclamation in recognition of the National Water Safety Month, and a proclamation in recognition of the National Small Business Week. For your review, the warrant list number nine is a report available for your review. With that, there is no other items on our agenda, we will be adjourned.
No, Dan's already on it.